Hey, thank you for joining the Southern States Mill Rights Regional Council Tele Town Hall. I am Wayne Jennings, Executive Secretary/Treasurer for the Council. As we would like to give all members an opportunity to connect and give everyone the opportunity to secure pen and paper to write down important information that will be delivered this evening. We will begin momentarily. Alright, at any time during this forum, if you have a question for our speakers, simply press *3 on your telephone keypad. This will alert us that you have a question and we will be taking live questions later in the hour. I would also ask, if you are not speaking, please mute your phone. This will greatly improve the quality of this call. In just a few minutes, you'll get to hear from four guest speakers. UBC Southern District Vice President Dennis Donahue, US Congressman Buddy Carter, Council Attorney Jay Young Dahl, and Council Political Director Rick Hallford. While we continue to wait for the additional members to connect, I would like to encourage you to join the Southern States Mill Rights texting program. We use our texting program to send important information to our members to get our text alerts. Text "SSMRC" to 855-57-SSMRC. Numerically, that is 855-577-7672. Or if you are listening on your cellphone, simply press 1 and we will add your phone number after this call. You can follow our council on social media as well. Our Facebook page is Southern States Mill Rights and you can find us on Twitter with Southern Mill Rights and SSMRC11. During this time of uncertainty, we know you have questions and concerns and our council reps are available to assist. To get your council representative's phone number texted to you, text "LU" and your local number to 855-57-SSMRC. Again, numerically, that will be 855-577-7672. So if you are from Local 1263, you will text "LU1263" to 855-57-SSMRC and you will get the Local 1263 Council Reps' contact information in return. Also, if you're looking for information concerning your state's unemployment benefits, text "UB" and your state's name to 855-57-SSMRC and you will receive information that will help you with resources for your state's unemployment benefits. So if you're looking for information concerning unemployment benefits for Alabama, text "UB Alabama" to 855-57-SSMRC and you will receive a response with the requested information. Alright, let's begin our meeting. Remember, at any time, press *3 if you have a question and we will call upon you when we get to that portion of the program. We called this meeting to address how the coronavirus is impacting our membership and their families. There are a lot of resources available and this time on the phone should inform you of the many ways to access those resources. First, we've set up a COVID-19 Information Clearing House in the news section of our website, southernstatesmillrights.org. We are also distributing a weekly newsletter via our email program. If you would like to be added to the email distribution list, text your email address The news items posted on the website and distributed via the email program contain information to help you navigate this crisis. Information such as: How to perform your work tasks while utilizing COVID-19 safe practices; Status of your council and local offices; Status of both your local and the UBC's International Training Center; How to contact your local health fund; How federal and state programs related to COVID-19 could help your family; Contact information for state and federal health organizations; What to do if you're feeling overly stressed; And how to file for unemployment benefits in your state. Okay, let's take a quick poll. We'd like to know how COVID-19 is affecting your employment. On your phone, press 1 if COVID-19 has caused you to be furloughed or laid off; press 2 if your hours have been reduced; and press 3 if you haven't experienced any change in your work status because of the COVID-19 virus. While everyone is entering their response, I will introduce our first guest speaker and we will review the poll results afterwards. We are honored to have one of our own join us this evening. I refer to him as the founding father of the Southern States Mill Rights Regional Council. This man is a Local 216 member. He was initiated on May 13, 1976, and has been a UBC member for nearly 44 years. He has served as Local 1836 Business Manager, as EST for four councils: the Arkansas and Southeast Missouri Regional Council, the Arkansas Regional Council, the Arkansas and Oklahoma Regional Council, and he was the essential leader necessary for the establishment of the Southern States Mill Rights Regional Council. Under his leadership, the SSMRC prospered, consistently grew in membership, increased in man-hours, and financial reserve. These days, he is better known as our UBC's Southern District Vice President. Since this man has been in his position as District Vice President, the Southern District as a whole has also experienced unprecedented growth. Membership and man-hours have increased under his guidance for several consecutive years. Please join me in welcoming our Southern District Vice President Dennis Donahue. Dennis, thank you for joining us and you are now live.
Good evening, Southern States Mill Rights, and thank you Executive Secretary/Treasurer Jennings for that introduction. Hey, you guys, we know members, this is unprecedented times we're living in. As a country and as a union, we have never faced a situation like we're facing now. But I want you to know, we will survive this together and we're going to come out of this stronger. I also want you to know that the UBC at the international level, at the district level, and at your council level, we are all in this battle together and we're going to win this battle together. In the Southern District, we are coordinating daily with all four of the regional councils and helping to not only disseminate, but to help interpret all the information that is coming to us. And that information is overwhelming for most people, so we're trying to make that easier for you to consume. Not only the information concerning the COVID-19, but the information on the Family Leave Act and the CARES Act, and the CARES Act is a stimulus bill, of course, but we're also helping to sort out the new unemployment benefits. We are meeting daily with the attorneys to ensure we are, number one, interpreting the information correctly, and number two, to ensure you, the member, have all the resources and the knowledge to access the help that is available to you and your families. Information concerning the virus and the stimulus package is welcomed, of course, but the language is sometimes very confusing. You know, like what and who does the stimulus bill cover and how do you access that help, the help that is available? These issues are what we are focusing on to make it easier for you. We're also concerned about the safety aspects of your job sites. We're making sure that our contractors are following the guidelines and the safety protocols that have been established to protect you from this virus on the projects, the ongoing projects. And lastly, we are working to make sure that as many jobs as possible are there for our members. We are working very closely with our partnering contractors to keep as many projects opened as possible and to make them aware of the opportunities created by this pandemic. And there is opportunities out there for work for our members because of this virus. So we're working very closely with our contractors, giving them information so we can not only hold on the projects we have, but also gain some work here. We want the opportunities, but we want them to be safe opportunities. And I will close by saying that we belong to a union that cares deeply about you and your family. And we are working tirelessly to make sure that the UBC families come out of this pandemic as healthy and as financially sound as possible. I want to thank EST Jennings and the entire SSMRC staff, who in my opinion are doing a tremendous job of getting the information out to our members and protecting your families. I'll turn this back to Wayne and I will remain on the line for any questions that you might have for me later. But, you know, from myself and from the UBC, and maybe more importantly, from my family to your family, I wish each of you good health. Wayne?
Vice President Donahue, we always appreciate your support and hard work for our membership, especially during these uncertain times. Thank you for joining us tonight. So it appears we've got a punt here. We're having a little technical difficulty on our first polled question and we're not really getting any results. So I'm going to ask that polled question second. Now, I would like to remind everybody, if you're not speaking, please mute your line. Alright, so let's take that first poll again. So we would like to know how COVID-19 is affecting your employment. On your phone, press 1 if COVID-19 has caused you to be furloughed or laid off; press 2 if your hours have been reduced; and press 3 if you haven't experienced any change in your work status because of the COVID-19 virus. I'm going to give it just a second to see if those results come in, guys. So we do see results coming in at this time. Give it about 10 seconds. Alright, so I think we got the poll up and running. So at this time, we'd like to share the results from the first poll, okay? Our poll measuring how your work status has been affected by COVID-19 shows that 239, I mean, I'm sorry, 45% of you have lost your job. 13% of you are experiencing reduced hours. And 42% have not had any job status change at all. That is, that is great that 42% haven't. Our next speaker, our next guest is another strong advocate of human rights, is US Congressman Buddy Carter from Georgia's 1st District. As a member of the US House of Representatives, the Congressman is a strong defender of Social Security, healthcare, Medicare, the Pension Protection Act, immigration reform, the environment, our veterans, and public education. Congressman, you are now live.
Well, thank you and thank you all for allowing me the privilege of speaking with you tonight. I appreciate everything you're doing. Let me begin, I'll make just some brief comments, but let me begin by saying, you know, this is something that none of us have ever experienced before. I don't care how old you are, you don't, none of us have ever experienced anything like this before. There is no playbook, there is no best practices for something like this. This is something that, you know, none of us could help and we in Congress understand that and we've actually addressed this. I apologize, my Beagle's going crazy, she's missing her mother. But, you know, in Congress, we've recognized this. Already, we passed three bills, three phases of the coronavirus relief package. The first phase had to do with the tests, making sure we were getting the tests, making sure we were getting research and development done on the vaccination. The second phase had to do with making sure you could get those tests and making sure that you would get them at no charge, making sure we had family leave, making sure we had sick leave, making sure we had telehealth, and that's something I'll speak about in just a second and some more. But the third phase that we're under now that's called the CARES Act, the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Stabilization Act, that was $2.2 trillion. I'll be quite honest with you, that is the first time I've ever voted for a bill that had a T behind the dollar mark. In fact, I think the President said it was the first time he'd ever signed a bill that had a T behind the dollar mark. Yes, that's a lot of money, but it is needed. And I'll be quite honest with you, even today, if I had to vote, I voted for all three of them, if I had to vote over again, I'd still vote for all three of them. They are needed. This is what our country needs right now. We're in a situation that we've never experienced before. We need to do this. Now, very quickly, the CARES Act did a number of different things. First of all, an economic stimulus for individuals, $1,200 for everyone who makes less than $75,000 a year. If you make between $75,000 and $99,000 a year, you get a tiered part of that. It won't be $1,200, it'll be part of that. If you make more than $99,000 a year, then you're not going to get a check. Many people have already received their checks. If you get a direct deposit from the federal government through some type of insurance or through some type Medicare or Social Security or anything, you're going to get a check and it'll be through a direct deposit. There is a way that you can check to see if you haven't got the check now. It's called Get My Payment. It is an app that you can download free of charge and you can track your payment to see what's going on with it if you haven't gotten it yet. I hope that most of you have gotten it. Keep in mind, this $1,200 is tax-free. You will not have to pay taxes on it. Senior citizens will get it. If you don't file income taxes and you're a senior citizen, and a lot of senior citizens don't, if you get Social Security, you're going to get a check. Illegal immigrants will not get a check, but you will if you're a taxpayer here in America. And as I said before, if you haven't gotten it yet, then go to that app, get that app, and you'll be able to see where it is and where in the process. Now, second thing we did is that we wanted to address our small businesses, make sure that they were being taken care of. If I had to describe the CARES Act in one word, that one word would be fluidity. I want to make sure that things are, that people are staying liquid, that they are maintaining the employee-employer relationship. I know you just asked a poll question about how many people have lost their job and certainly we addressed unemployment in this as well. We increased the amount of unemployment, $600 per week during this time that this pandemic is going on, and that was very important as well. Now, for the small businesses, we did a number of things. We actually created a program, a program that did not even exist a month ago, the PPP, the Payroll Protection Program, that would allow small businesses, those fewer than 500 employees, to be able to get a loan that could be up to either two and a half times their monthly average payroll or $10 million, whichever is less, and that it could actually be forgiven if it's used for the right thing, such as payroll, if 75% of it's used for payroll. Excuse me. Now, I will tell you, and I'm sure you all know this, that program ran out of money this morning. It did run out of the $350 billion that we appropriated. We need to put more money into that program. It is needed for our small businesses. There's also another loan that has existed for some time now called the EIDL loan, the Economic Injury Disaster Loan. That needs more money as well. We need to go back in Congress and appropriate for both of those. Those are important. So what are we trying to do to get the economy back on track? That's what we're trying to do. We're trying to keep small businesses going, we're trying to make sure that people stay liquid, we're trying to make sure that people who are on unemployment, that they're going to get that assistance. I get asked often, is there going to be another stimulus bill? I suspect, and not only do I suspect, but I do expect that there will be a fourth stimulus bill. And I do believe that it will address a number of things. Now, if I could back up for one second and make clear that what we need to do to get more money to the EIDL and to the PPP, the Payroll Protection Program, I hope that we can do that immediately. That needs to happen now. This fourth phase, it may take a little while for us to get to it. So I really do hope that we can just go ahead and appropriate more money for the EIDL and for the PPP because people need it, businesses need it. They need it now. Yes, there will be a fourth phase. What will it look like? Well, I think that what it'll look like, first of all, I think it will address a lot of what I refer to as nuances that we didn't see and that we didn't know were going to happen. Things that we couldn't have expected, but have popped up. One of the things I mentioned earlier was telehealth. You know, we've been talking, I'm currently an only pharmacist serving in Congress and I serve on the Health Subcommittee. We've been talking about telehealth for a long time. We need telehealth, we need telehealth. Well, this crisis, this pandemic has accelerated that. We are using telehealth now and it's good. It's exactly what we need during this time. We may need to put more money in there for telehealth in the fourth phase. There has been some talk, some chatter, if you will, that we may need an economic stimulus in the fourth phase, or there may be a fifth phase. We hope that our economy, and we have to be concerned not only about the physical health of our citizens, that's our number one priority, but we also have to be concerned about the economic health of our country. We hope that our economic, that our economy is going to have a V-shaped rebound. We hope that it's going to go up just as quickly as it's gone down. One thing that has been suggested that may help that is infrastructure and money for infrastructure. Now, keep in mind, this is an area where we've all agreed on it, the Democrats, the Republicans, the President, everybody said we need to do infrastructure. I don't care if you're from rural area or urban area, I don't care if you're Republican or Democrat, older, young, you need infrastructure. We all know that. This may be an opportunity for us to address our infrastructure needs and to get our economy back going again as well. So perhaps the Phase 4, perhaps Phase 5 may include an economic stimulus like that, but I know that it will include anything that we need to address the healthcare needs of our citizens. That is very important. I mentioned that PPP and one last thing that I, well, one of the last things that I'll mention. A lot of it's going to the construction industry. A lot of these loans, a lot of these PPP programs and loans and dollars have gone to construction. In fact, almost 15% of that money has gone to construction and that's good, it needs to. We understand that, but I thought I would mention that because I think it's important to you. The last thing I'll mention, and then, again, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to y'all. Folks, you know, these are trying times, there's no question about it, and how quickly are we going to rebound? What does that look like? What is the rollout of our economy getting us back to some kind of normalcy look like? It's hard to say. I think it's going to be a combination of science and ingenuity. Science being, we got to be, we know testing's going to be a big part of it, we got to have testing. We know that we've got to intuitively just work our way through it. We're not going to all turn on the light switch and go back to work tomorrow. That's not going to happen. We're going to have to gradually get into this. It's important that we get it right. You all know this. If we bounce back too quickly and we have a relapse, then everything we've done's been for nothing. We can't have that happen. We got to make sure that we gradually get our economy back to where it should be and will be. And we're going to get there. I'm convinced, and I know you are too. Yeah, it's tough and I've gotten cabin fever just like all of you have, but I will tell you, what I've seen throughout the district that I have the honor and privilege of representing, what I've seen throughout the state of Georgia, what I've seen throughout the United States has been nothing short of phenomenal. I've seen people pulling together. I've seen people at food banks, at shelters. I've seen them volunteering. I've seen people looking out for each other. We are in this together and we are going to be victorious. We're going to beat this invisible enemy that we're facing right now. So I want to thank you again for everything you're doing. I want to thank you for having me on this call tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to share with you and I'll yield back.
Thank you Congressman. Your insight is always right on target. We truly appreciate your efforts on Capitol Hill and you taking the time to address our membership this evening. We really appreciate you. Okay, let's continue with our program. Remember, if you have a question at any time, press *3. So it's time for our second poll. What is your top concern during this COVID-19 pandemic? So press 1 for myself and my family being exposed to COVID-19. Press 2 for the loss of work or reduced hours. Press 3 for the loss of healthcare coverage. Press 4 for accessing unemployment benefits. Press 5 for personal finances, or press 6 for other. While everybody is entering those responses, I'll introduce our next guest speaker, our Council's Attorney Jay Young Dahl. Jay has been our attorney since the founding of the SSMRC. Jay is also the attorney for the UBC's Southern District. He and his father have been representing the UBC since 1958. Jay is an Arkansas native and was a local union organizer and officer before he got his law license in 1980. He is leading our legal efforts in the South during this coronavirus pandemic. Jay, you are now live.
Wayne, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to everybody today and thank you for the opportunity to represent this council. It's done extraordinary things, beginning with the leadership of Vice President Donahue and now with your leadership. And I'm here today to just assure folks that we are doing all we can do, and I've been given the charge from EST Jennings, to make sure that we're on top of every legal matter that might affect you, our membership, and your families. And I believe I can say that we understand the issues you're facing and we're focusing on them. And I can tell you personally that it's, this virus has hit my family. My son, daughter-in-law, and two small children probably got the virus, got it early before there was enough tests. My son had a difficult 36-hour period, but fortunately, and we're blessed in this way, everybody's fine now. So I've had that kind of personal experience to see what it can do and they got through it and like the Congressman said, we're all going to get through it, a nation and as our union. So I'm going to talk to you, the Congressman touched on some things and Vice President Donahue touched on some things. I'm going to talk a little more detail about the overall scope of the legal things that we're looking at to make sure that, you know, we don't, the union movement, we don't want to get things that aren't ours, but we do want to get those things that our families and ourselves are entitled to. One of the difficulties we've had is that because of the unprecedented nature of this, when Congress passed the bills that the Congressman talked about, there really weren't rules and regulations to figure out how they're going to actually work. So after the passage of the two laws, the Families First Coronavirus Response Act and the Second, the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Securities Act, or the CARES Act, we spent a lot of time trying to figure out how these things were going to be applied. And we have a Leadership Council led by Vice President Donahue in the Southern District and EST Jennings is a star within that and we are talking every few days, trying to get the latest information. For a while there, I was having to look at the Department of Labor website every hour to see if there was any kind of new information. We're starting to get, things are starting to clear, so that's good. So I'm going to try to give you a little of that information, some of it's kind of detailing, and then I'm... And then I'm, like, uh, Vice President Donahue, I'll be around to answer questions if there are any that we, um, that need answering. So as you know, in March, the two different, the two main bills were passed, the Families First Act and the CARES Act. Both of them were bipartisan's efforts to give economic relief for businesses and workers. Uh, in the first bill, the Families First, there was, um, extra money to go into unemployment benefits. So this money goes on, if one is out of work, this money from the federal government goes on top of the money from your state, and each state has a somewhat different, uh, benefit amount. And then, uh, additional unemployment assistance came in the CARES Act. So there's now expanded access to unemployment benefits. As I said, the payment's gone up. The federal government is going to allow a longer duration of unemployment benefits, and the waiting period that we had in most states has been eliminated. Again, this is a state-by-state matter, but, uh, Wayne talked to you about how you can get with your rep for your individual state, and they'll have information about this, uh, for you. And I think also, um, Political Director Hallford may talk about that a little bit. But for a lot of people, uh, depending on, uh, how you're doing in terms of wages, if you add the federal money and you add the state money, uh, it's, it's a fair amount of money on unemployment. We've had a lot of issues with getting that going. A lot of the states weren't ready. Their computer systems were ready, weren't ready, et cetera. But that's being, um, that's being remedied. Also, uh, for people in your family, unemployment now, benefits may come to some people who've exhausted their benefits, who are independent contractors, who have sole proprietors. So there's a number of other people who can get it, and there may be people in your family who are entitled to that. Uh, then there's a program, uh, under Families First Act to allow for paid sick leave for employers with less than 500 employees. Uh, it covers two weeks of paid sick leave, and the way the employer gets paid is through a cut in their payroll taxes, essentially equal to, uh, the paid sick leave they pay out. And they pay, they have to pay the, um, your healthcare to keep your hour bank up at that point. And I've had a number of conversations with employers as to how that, how that works. Uh, there's also some paid sick leave through the Family and Medical Leave Act, which is a statute we've had in our country for some time. If you have to be off because of, uh, need to take medical leave because for yourself or your family, you may be entitled for up to 12 weeks of pay under that. Again, there's a lot of complications to it, and not all the rules and regulations have come out. But if you think you're in that situation, you get with your rep. It'll get to, uh, Wayne. It can get to me. I, I can help out. There's also direct payments coming that the Congressman mentioned, up to $1,200. Uh, I think people probably have heard a lot about that. And then there are, uh, tax credits to keep people at work. Where, again, under the CARES Act, the employer will get certain monies from the federal government to keep people at work. Uh, and then the Congressman also mentioned what's called the Paycheck Protection Act, which is money from the, uh, through the Small Business Administration. This thing has been very complicated in the rollout. I don't think it's Congress's fault, but the, the administration, uh, kind of bureaucracy just kind of wasn't ready for it. Uh, there's a lot of disputes about it now because some information's come out that some, somewhat larger employers have been able to get it, maybe before some smaller employees. But I think Congress will, will get on top of that. And then there are economic entry disaster loans, and some of our training funds, who've had to furlough training directors because there's so little training going on, we're starting to get some online training, are being able to take advantage of some of those, and we're trying to make sure that, uh, our training funds get the money they deserve out of these, uh, out of these programs. Uh, we're also making sure that in our benefit funds, we do those things legally we can do to help folks out. Uh, in the healthcare area, a number of our healthcare funds are looking at how we can help if people might lose their hour bank or lose their coverage due to the COVID-19 virus, and trustees are looking at that. And, you know, those funds are administered half by union representatives and half by employer representatives. And essentially, you need to have unanimous vote. So there's discussion going on about that. Retirement funds are also looking at especially to find contribution, uh, whether we can be of assistance. Uh, but the trustees are thinking hard about what's the right thing to do right now because, um, you know, we need to keep some powder dry, and folks are going to need to retire because we're going to beat this thing. And so, uh, you can be assured that, uh, the trustees on these funds, and I'm the lawyer for a number of them, are looking very hard at what can be done, what's the fair thing to do. And I'm sure you'll be hearing some things about that in the near future. The next thing that we've started to spend more time on is safety on the job. Uh, you know, most of us, uh, I'd say that the mantra for our council is we want everybody working, but we want everybody working safe. So what does "safe" mean? Uh, we want to follow the medical professionals. We want to follow the, the science. So we've been looking at the OSHA rules. We've been looking at the rules from the CDC, uh, and trying to translate those for our employers so we can keep working as much as possible, but keep working safely. There are a couple of other, uh, things in the laws that might be helpful to some members. There are some forbearance if you get behind on your mortgage payments for folks that have student loans. Uh, there's some forbearance there, or, or some, can be some assistance there if you're in that situation. Again, you can get with your rep, or there's beginning to be a lot more good information on the internet. But again, one of the problems at first is everything was so confusing, um, that it became very hard for an individual person to know what to do. Uh, I can tell you from the labor side, from the legal side, we are looking at what might be in, uh, a law that might be the next law, like the Congressman talked about. Uh, I, some of the things that are talked about are more assistance for our trust funds, maybe some assistance for COBRA. Uh, but we'll see what Congress does on that. So I'm going to end it. I'm going to leave it there, um, Wayne. And, uh, but I want to let you know that, uh, we're on this, uh, and we're going to make sure that, that we do everything we can in the legal arena to make sure that you and your family are protected as much as possible.
Jay, uh, thank you. We appreciate your insight, and that is all great information. However, you did answer 90% of the questions that are currently on the board. Uh, just, uh, we're still going to take those questions, though, guys. Don't, don't, uh, worry about that. So remember, if you have a question of any of our guest speakers, press star three, and we will attempt to get to everyone's questions shortly. So at this time, I'd like to share the results from our second poll. Our poll question was, um, I lost it here. All right, what is, what is your top concerns during the COVID-19 pandemic? So 35% of our members on the call today said that it was exposure for them or their families. 25% of their biggest concern was loss of work or reduced hours. 12%, the loss of healthcare coverage, excuse me. 9% accessing unemployment benefits. We had 11% that are worried about personal finances. And we had six, uh, 8% that are worried about, uh, other. And we will be able to, we, we know who those six, those 8%, the six people are. We'll be able to call you back and get exactly what your concerns are. So with that, I'll introduce our final speaker. Our final speaker is Rick Hallford, a brother of Local 216 with 19 years of service. Rick became a member of the UBC in March of 2001. Rick has served as a part-time instructor, delegate to the Arkansas Oklahoma Regional Council, business agent for Local 216. And for the SSMRC, Rick has served as delegate, Western Regional Manager, Chief of Staff, and currently serves as our Political Director. Rick is going to help us get our arms wrapped around unemployment rules and filing information. Rick, you are now live.
Thank you, EST Wayne Jennings. Good evening, everyone. Hope all is well with you and your family during these trying times. I hope here to update you on unemployment insurance under the CARES Act. As many of you know, US businesses close to prevent the spread of the coronavirus. Thankfully, many of the members of SSMRC will qualify for unemployment, unemployment insurance. Unemployment insurance is a joint state-federal government program that provides money for people who've lost their jobs. Under the CARES Act, the rules regarding unemployment insurance have expanded. More Americans will qualify for benefits, and the government will pay more money for an extended period of time. CARES Act has changed some rules regarding unemployment insurance. Each state will offer unemployment benefits for 13 more weeks than it had previously allowed. For many states, this means the residents can qualify for up to 39 weeks of unemployment. These provisions will last till the end of 2020. If your state has entered into the federal program, you'll also receive an additional $600 per week than you typically would have qualified for, no matter of your former income. For every week you go without work, from that date, your state signs onto the federal program until July 31st of 2020. If you haven't applied for unemployment insurance yet, don't worry. You can apply now, receive payments retroactively for as early as March 29th, 2020. Normally, there are two criterias for unemployment insurance. You must have lost work through no fault of your own. You must have met the state's requirements for wages earned or time worked. Under the CARES Act, there are additional rules for who qualifies due to the effects of the coronavirus. You may qualify for unemployment because of, one, your own COVID-19 illness. Two, COVID-19 illness in a family member. Three, job loss or temporary workplace closure because of the virus. And four, the need to stay home to take care of a child whose school or childcare facility is closed because of the virus, and if a co-guardian's not able to do this. Furlough workers do not usually qualify for unemployment insurance, but they do under the CARES Act. The expanded unemployment insurance benefit explicitly excludes who are already receiving paid sick leave or other paid leave benefits and remain employed. Though, the states can decide whether they participate in the expanded unemployment insurance program created by the CARES Act. Visit careeronestop.org and select the state to learn how to apply in your state. Career One Stop is a job resource from the US Department of Labor that provides links to general unemployment insurance information, coronavirus responses, and applications for your state. You'll have to apply through your state to receive the benefits. You may choose to call your state to apply, but due to long wait times amid the coronavirus outbreak, you could probably apply more quickly by filling out an online application. Be ready, though, with your bank account details, previous employer contact information, and job history for the last 18 months. To get unemployment benefit information for your state, text UB, your state's name, to 855-57-SSMRC, and we'll send their state's information to you. Once again, to get unemployment benefit information for your state, text UB and your state's name to 855-57-SSMRC, and we'll send the state's information to you. Thank you. Have a great evening. Stay safe.
Great information, Rick. Thank you so much. So, uh, at this time, I want to open the program to the members. Uh, we are running a little long on time, or short on time remaining, but we're going to try to get to as many members as possible, okay? So you members will have a chance to ask any of our speakers questions. Uh, if you have a question, please press star three at any time. I will call upon you stating your name, what local you're from, if my screen are put it there. I see some of them are missing, and letting you know that your line is live. So please remember, speak slowly and clearly. We'll take one question from each member as to allow for the most questions to be addressed during this time allowed. If you have a second question, please hit star three a second time, and we will call upon you if time allows. Keep in mind, if you have a two-part question, that's two questions. Okay, let's take some questions for our membership, from our membership. And we're going to start with Mr. Richard Hinkle from Local 1263. Richard, you are now live.
Yes, uh, on the healthcare situation. If we're not working and we're on a furlough, how's that going to work with us on behalf of paying the healthcare? Or how's the situation going to happen on that behalf?
So, Richard, I'll, I'll take the first shot at that. And I know Jay Youngdahl, our attorney, may, may want to jump in there. But we are working every day with our fringe funds to see how we can improve the availability to provide healthcare for you guys. Uh, and if, if you're on a furlough, hopefully you've been working enough to have some bank hours. And if your, if your bank hours are starting to run out, uh, I think a lot of the trustees, well, I know the trustees are entertaining what we can do to, to ensure that our members get continued healthcare coverage. Jay, would you like to add to that?
I can just say it's a great question. Uh, and so what we're doing is we're looking at every, uh, one of the funds and trying to figure out people who have full hour banks, part hour banks, almost no hour bank, and how we can, how we can deal with that. Uh, we also have some people who, let's say, uh, may have already been laid off and, uh, say, just one month into kind of a COBRA. Uh, we're looking at that, too. Most of our funds, I believe, are in very good shape and have some, uh, ability to, to help out. And at this point, we look like, it looks like that we're going to be in, in a very, in very good shape, assuming things start to pick up, which it seems like they probably will.
Richard, I hope that addressed your question. Um, and we'll move on to the second question of the night. And this question is going to come from Travis Daniels out of Local 729. And this question, uh, will be directed for Jay Youngdahl as well. But Travis, you are now live.
My question is, if we work, um, normally 40 hours a week for our company, um, are we able to apply for FMLA to stay home and take care of children that, uh, the schools are shut down or daycares are closed, um, in our area?
Okay, um, so, so this is something that is, um, somewhat complicated, and I'm happy to, to help you out personally on this. Um, the way the law was written, it makes some difference based on, um, your relationship to the child. Like, I, I did one recently where the question was, a man got remarried, and the children were the wife's children from a previous marriage, and how we deal with that. But if you will, uh, get with your rep, and we could set up a call tomorrow, Monday, or whatever, and I'm happy to walk you through the different options, and then you can decide which one works best for you and your family.
Travis, I, I might have cut you off there, brother. I apologize. But I, I hope that answers your question, and I'm sure Jay Youngdahl, uh, will follow up with you. So with that, I would like to move on down to an online question from Mark Adams, Sr. And I apologize, Mark, you, you didn't put your local number in there, so I don't know what local you're from. I think, do I have, I have to read that question, I believe. So the, so the question is, can we draw out of the 401K up to the $100,000 of COVID-19 with no 10% penalty and an option to pay 20% federal tax over the next three years? So, Mark, the, the trustees of your 401 or your program will have to approve for you to have that capabilities. I know that those trustees are contemplating that. I've been involved in a few conversations. I'm not sure... I'm not sure of the dollar amount that you'll be allowed to draw, but I believe you will be hearing some information in the coming days that educates you on what you can do for your specific 401 plan. There's many different 401s, defined contributions, and annuity plans across our 11-state council. And each of those funds, the trustees of those funds will have to approve how to deal with a withdrawal, and every one of them could be slightly different. But I know that every plan is trying to come up with an avenue to allow, hopefully to allow members to be able to pull some resources from there. I hope that answered your question. You are online, and I can't take you live, but I hope that answered your question, brother. Great question, very good question. So with that, we will go to our next caller online. We have Daniel Brown from 1421. And Daniel, you are now live.
Hey, good evening. I hope everybody's doing all right there. My question is simple. I know that with COVID-19, the halls have been restricted on movement, and the union members aren't allowed to go there, obviously, can't have, Congress should attend. My question is, have we sought after any online courses or things that apprentices could do if they're out of work or wanting to move up as well at this time? Looked at virtual courses, or have we explored any of those programs?
So, Daniel, I'm going to comment on that, and then I'm going to ask District Vice President Donahue to come up, comment on that, because he is going to have a greater knowledge of what's going on out pushed from the ITC. But for our local training trust funds, we actually have five training trust funds across our 11-state footprint. We're in constant communication with our training directors, and I would imagine many of them are on this call listening this evening. But they are all working diligently to try to establish programs that will allow you guys to continue, especially the apprentices, continue with their adult education. I know some of the programs are actually mailing curriculum or having an apprentice come by and pick up the curriculum so they can study at home, and then come back in in very small classes where they could keep social distancing, people six feet apart or greater, and do the testing portion of those programs. I also know that our training directors are working with the ITC to try to establish some of that online training. At this point, I don't know how quickly we'll be able to get that out. But District Vice President Donahue, you may have some insight on that?
Not really, Wayne, you've answered that very well. But I tell you, the training centers, we're looking all across the Southern District. We're going to reevaluate the 30th of this month to see about reopening some of them. If we don't open on the 30th, we're going to look at it the 15th of May. So depending on how this virus, this pandemic goes, will we start reopening the training centers locally sooner or later? The ITC is closed, and I think we'll be reevaluating that sometime in May, too, to find out, to make a determination before we reopen that. But yes, there is lot, there is classes online that you can take from the international, and your training center, training director would have the direct information on that. So I would suggest tomorrow that you call your training center there, 1421, and talk to the training director, and he can instruct you on how to get online on some of the classes that we do have for you to take. Good question, though.
Great question, Daniel. Yes, sir. So at this time, we're going to move on. We're going to go to Colt Rice from 1263. And Colt, I got on here that it's either me or Dennis that answers this question, okay? So Colt, you are now live.
All right, thank you. I wanted to know, as a traveler, have we worked up anything as a, you know, each individual hall, will they have something worked up as far as trying to hold each contractor accountable by what they supply or how they go about their daily routines when we come in these plants?
So Colt, I'm hoping that you're talking about on the safety aspect, because in my cued question, it says preventing lockouts. So for clarification, is it preventing lockouts or for the safety of our membership?
Right, it's basically the same, because whenever I was up here, I'm here in Michigan, and at Chrysler, I mean, there was almost fights. There were guys that, on the electrical union side, there were two or three guys on the day shift that were tested, they tested positive. Well, they just kept on. And there was a guy that had been, his wife had been to South Korea, she came back, he didn't tell anybody for nine days. So, I mean, there was almost a big shutdown, the whole plant, then finally, you know, Chrysler did shut everything down about, I'd say, a good week to a week and a half after acknowledging these people had the COVID. So, I'm just wondering...
And I need to work with you here, okay? So as far as preventing lockouts, even though we're under this COVID-19 pandemic, we still operate under collective bargaining agreements. And I'm not aware of any collective bargaining agreement out there that doesn't prevent lockouts, okay? And as far as the safety portion of what a contractor is supposed to be doing, we just got some new OSHA guidelines out actually today that are educating us on what to expect and what we can push out there or bring to our contractors and say, hey, this is the work environment that needs to be established. We're working with our contractors, they are our business partners, and, you know, we want to work every day to ensure you guys can go to work and have a safe work environment, whether it's just the hazards of everyday construction work, or whether it's the hazards of COVID-19 pandemic.
That's what I want to know, because, I mean, there was anywhere from like 800 to 1,200 people inside this plant every day, so that's really what I wanted to know right there.
Dennis, do you have anything to add to that?
Just briefly, you know, these plants, these owners, these end-users, they were throwing a curveball on all this stuff, too. And I think it's taken some of them a little while to come up to speed on what the guidelines they should use. But the business reps across the nation are doing their best to monitor these jobs and make sure our members are safe, and I think it's getting better. I hope that's the case. So, you know, everything was not done right at the very beginning, probably, but I think it is getting better, and we're doing our best as union representatives to monitor these job sites and make sure that you are protected, so when you get back home that you're protected and you're protecting your family. So I think everybody's doing, from the contractors, the end-user, and the union, I think they're doing everything they can to make this a safe workplace.
Thank you.
All right, again, we're experiencing a little bit of technical difficulty. We're running short on time, so I'm going to make this the last question, okay? And forgive me if I get it wrong, but Ms. April Crownheart from Local 1263, your question disappeared on me, but I believe if I can recall that question, you were concerned or you wanted to know how many of our 11 states were actually participating in the $600 additional unemployment federal program? For that question, we would definitely direct that to Rick Holford.
Great question, great question, April. So as of yesterday and all my research and that I've done, every state, in our 11 states, has opted into the FPUCK, is what I call it, which is the Federal Pandemic Unemployment Compensation Program. They've all opted into that program right there. As of right now, I don't see any of them opting in to the Pandemic Emergency Unemployment Compensation Program as of yet, but that's stuff that still needs to be rolled out. But right now, they all have opted into the Federal Pandemic Unemployment Compensation Program for the additional $600 supplement per week.
Great answer there, Rick. April, I apologize, somehow we dropped you on the computer and I couldn't bring you live, so we apologize for that. But at this time, I'd like to say, hey, great questions, we appreciate everybody participating in the call tonight, but we want to take one last poll before we enter into closing, okay? So we would like to know how you prefer to receive communications from the council and your local. So press 1 for text messaging, press 2 for emails, press 3 for informational calls, and press 4 for social media posts. We'll give that about 10 seconds, and we'll give you the results. Coming in, votes are coming in quick. All right, so it looks like 58% of the membership on this call had voted to see, to have communications by text message. 29% of the membership have voted to have communications by email, 12% by informational call, and only 1% by social media. Those are good numbers, and I hope you guys get in our texting program. So with our time coming to a close, I want to first thank our speakers. We appreciate all of you spending your time with us this evening and offering your insight during this uncertain time. To our members, our staff is working every day to get you informed. Get the information you need to keep your family safe and preserve your work status as much as possible. Things are changing sometimes by the hour, and we will do everything we can to make sure that you are kept in the loop. By the way, the best way to get the most current information from us is to join our text message and email programs. Again, to get our text alerts, text SSMRC to 855-57... Got it wrong here messing with me. Again, to get our text alerts, text SSMRC to 855-57SSMRC, or if you're on your mobile phone, simply press 1. We're also sending updates by email. If you would like to be added to our email distribution list, text your email address to, yep, you guessed it, 855-57SSMRC. Remember, to get your council representative's phone number, text LU and your local number to 855-57SSMRC. So if you're a Local 2232 member, you would text LU2232 to 855-57SSMRC, and you'll receive the Local 2232 council rep's contact information in return. In closing, allow me to summarize by saying this. You are not alone during these trying times. We are here for you, and we're working to make sure every brother and sister has the resources they need to get through this crisis. Visit the council's COVID-19 Information Clearing House on the SSMRC website. That would be www.southernstatesmillrights.org. By moving your icon over the news tab and clicking on latest news, you can view the latest updates. You can also get updates by our weekly electronic newsletter, our texting program, and our social media platforms. Our Facebook page is Southern States Mill Rights, and you can find us on Twitter with Southern Mill Rights and @SSMRC11. We weren't able to get to every question tonight, but if you have more questions, please leave your question when you hear the prompt to leave a voicemail. We will have someone contact you to address your question. This week, I began recording regular video messages. In these messages, I will be answering member questions. Please email your questions to info@southernstatesmillrights.org. I hope all of you are staying safe. Please follow the expert's advice of handwashing, surface sanitizing, and social distancing. Please take care of yourselves and your families, so that when things return to normal, you are healthy and ready to go. Thank you again for participating in this evening's. And remember, we are stronger together. Good night.